All right, we're gonna go ahead and get started this evening. Um, try to keep things on task and moving along here. Thank you for those of you in attendance this evening to our Kaysville City Planning Commission meeting on Thursday, January 11th, here at City Hall. First agenda item will be opening an approval minutes from the meeting of November 9th, 2017.
We'll go ahead and make a motion that we approve the Kaysville City Planning Commission meeting minutes from November 9th, 2017.
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, get a second?
Second.
Oh.
It's a new year, I know, we're kinda, we're a little rusty, I mean, you know.
I will second it and aye.
I will second it and aye.
Aye.
Aye. No, I am no motion.
Off to a good start.
I've been sick for three weeks, I'm sorry.
All right, uh, second item, conditional use permit. We have two under Agenda Item Two. First one is for a contractor at 1880 West, 550 North, for Mr. Cole Allen and Mr. Brian Allen, staff.
Okay, as introduction, so Cole Allen is the applicant for the business license, and the property owner is Brian Allen. So he's requested the conditional use here at the property, and you can see in your packet on the map of 550 North and 1880 West. And in discussion with him, understanding it's essential use for paperwork and the desk work, sounds like he's got family that also does similar work, and they've got a yard where he's able to keep equipment and trailers and so forth, that would be stored off-site. So other than what's expected for essential uses in office, that's what we'll envision here on this property. Based on the visit with him and understanding of that with the ordinance we have on, in the books already, staff's recommending approval without additional conditions.
All right, thank you. Brian or Cole, are you guys here? Do you guys wanna come up to lectern, I guess, if we have any questions for you?
Sure.
Yeah. So we'll open it up here to the commission. This looks pretty straightforward, as usual, so, any questions, comments?
I'm just assuming that as always, staff has talked to you and told you the requirements.
Yeah.
Good enough then. Anything that you'd like to add? I mean, pretty straightforward, right?
Pretty small, so.
Yeah.
Pretty really.
Right. Don't worry, son. Okay, good. Uh, can we get a motion then, I guess?
I move that we approve the conditional use permit for a major home occupation B for Cole Allen at 1880 West, 550 North.
Second.
Is it my turn again? Aye.
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 Thank you. Thanks, appreciate it. Uh, second, 2B, will be conditional use permit for major home occupation B for Handyman, for Mr. Jason Spencer and Mr. Chris Schultz at 313 East Crestwood Road, staff.
Okay. Again, as introduction to this item, Mr. Spencer will be moving into this property. As I understand it, it's his parents, they're gonna be out of the country for, or some time, or at least out of this neighborhood, and so he'd be going in there. It sounds like previously, um, the family's been in contact with Paul Davis, essentially subcontract with them, so when there are jobs that they need an extra body on to take care of a specific need or issue, they call him, and, and so, other than essentially responding to, uh, different tasks and jobs, the property's used as an office, he's got a, essentially a typical pickup truck that keeps his tools and, and things in. Product and items are delivered on-site generally. We mentioned occasionally, on the way to the job, might go to Home Depot and pick up a door tool, something you had to install, so, based on my understanding of how things are set up, staff's recommending approval, um, without additional conditions.
Awesome. Thank you, Lyle. Uh, Mr. Spencer or Mr. Schultz, do you hear my chants?
Jason.
Jason Spencer? Uh, we'll open it up to the commission. Again, this looks pretty straightforward. Questions, comments? Anything you'd like to add?
No.
Pretty good? Good to go? All right, very good. Uh, can we get a motion then?
I'll move we grant a conditional use permit for major home occupation B Handyman for Jason Spencer, Chris Schultz, at 313 East Crestwood Road.
I'll second.
Aye.
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 Awesome. Thank you. Appreciate it. Uh, number three, public hearing, and request rezone of 4.52 acres of property at 849 and 881 South Sunset Drive, from A1 Light Agricultural to the R1 LD, Single Family Low Density zoning district, with a PRUD overlay zone for Ms. Elisha Peterson and Mr. Jim Bags, staff.
And if I may, um, chair, just as recommendation, the next item on the agenda is regarding the same issue, if you feel it's appropriate to introduce that as well.
Sure, we can go ahead and do that, too. So that's three. Uh, four will be public hearing and preliminary plat approval for the Peterson subdivision at the aforementioned addresses, 849 and 881 South Sunset Drive, uh, for the same applicants, Ms. Elisha Peterson and Mr. Jim Bags.
Thank you. Uh, so as introduction on this one, the property just across the street essentially from Centennial Junior High, um, here off Sunset Drive, um, kind of two property owners that have worked together in consideration of, uh, how to, how to potentially develop the back portion of their property. Uh, you can see that Sunset Drive is on the left of this image here on the west, that's the rail trail on the right, and, uh, have similar properties to the north and south in the A1 agricultural zone, so if you go to the existing zoning map, as the next image, uh, you can see where it fits in within the community and surrounding zoning. Um, we do have some R1 LD zone nearby, um, is something we're seeing more and more of on the west side of town, uh, that allows two units per acre with some variation in lot size, nothing smaller than 12,000 square feet, but no more than two dwellings per acre under the total development. Uh, so with a total of four and a half acres of property, um, they're requesting the potential of doing up to nine lots, which fits within that density, and the proposal includes a private lane subdivision, so, you can see a subdivision in the proposed preliminary plat here that comes off of Sunset Drive, servicing the additional lots. Uh, the total of nine lots does include the two existing homes, so it would be potentially seven new homes in the subdivision. Um, references to the general plan and some of the PRUD language are provided for you in the staff report. Again, because of the nature of the request, there are two motions we're looking for from the planning commission this evening. Uh, one, a consideration of the zoning district change to the R1 LD with the PRUD, uh, which you have the discretion on as a legislative action, as you're making a recommendation to the council, on how you feel that fits with the neighborhood and the general plan. And then, under a second motion, would be the consideration of the preliminary plat, and again with the PRUD, you've got some discretion, if you think this is a good layout, on how that would work with this particular neighborhood. And because of the nature of that, um, double check my report, and the discretion, if, if the zoning makes sense to you, that's up to your discretion, if, if otherwise, the preliminary plat itself does meet all the minimum requirements and sizes, so staff recommends that the plat itself, should the zoning be appropriate, could be recommended for approval to the city council. Um, with that, I'm happy to take further questions. I'll make note that at least the Petersons had mentioned to me specifically that, uh, when we scheduled the hearing and sent out the mailers to everybody for tonight's date, and they found out after that they wouldn't be in town, so they're not available. I'm not sure if Mr. Bags, um, is, is here this evening maybe to represent, but, um, they were happy to, if there are enough questions, uh, to bring it back to the commission if necessary, that we could do that on another night, but, um, we felt it was, there was enough information that we could probably consider as something this evening as far as a recommendation.
Gotcha. All right, good, nothing. All right, thank you. Uh, since we have public hearings attached to these, uh, let's go ahead and open up the, uh, public hearing, uh, for Agenda Item Number Three. This is specific to the rezone request, um, from A1 to R1 LD, so if we have anybody here wishing to speak on the rezone, uh, please come forward.
I have some questions. If, uh...
If you could come forward and state your name, please.
Serena Howard.
Okay.
And I live to the north of that property, immediately, and, um, I have some general questions about, um, 'cause I don't know what the rezoning involves, or when these questions get answered, but we have questions about water shares, and, um, also, I have questions and concerns about traffic flow on Sunset Drive, and being right across from the junior high, it's extremely busy and hard to pull out. Um, and I also have concerns about being next to now one, two, three, four properties on one side. What's going to be happening with that? Um, that's gonna be a wall, or what is that going to be?
You're talking about to the north, as far as privacy between your property and theirs, correct?
Privacy, and also just, you know, fence line, that kind of thing.
Right.
So, um, I don't know how to find out information about water shares or those kind of issues, and if there will be also curb and gutter that's placed all along that whole entire street, because we don't have it on that side, and there's a lot of drainage issues in our property already, and there's drainage issues in the property that you're rezoning, but so there's actually a huge pond back there, so...
Can you share your name once again for me?
Serena Howard.
Thank you. Good questions.
Okay, thank you. Uh, anyone else wanna speak on this, once, twice? Uh, we'll go ahead and close the public hearing on this, on the rezone request then, and we will, uh, open things up to the commission and to city staff. Some of her questions were probably better addressed to city staff than to us, but, um, with regard to drainage, curb and gutter, now with it being a private drive, that's not a requirement, correct?
Yeah, I'll be happy to answer that and the others that I can, and may look to Andy or city engineer on some of them. In general, perhaps to answer some of your questions, at the preliminary level, we don't have the answers very specifically, so if the general idea of this works out, the next step would be that they would have to go through engineering and specific design to prove that the drainage and some of those water issues can work, so, they don't have probably the most concrete answer you'd like to have at this point, but that would be something that we'd have to check on and require of them before everything's ultimately said and done. Um, the street itself, one of the requirements and differences on a driveway and a private lane is it would include the new proposed cul-de-sac curb and gutter of some fashion, uh, so it would control and contain water within it, and they'd be responsible for dealing with the storm drain and, and water issues within their site. Um, looking specifically at Sunset Drive, typically under a subdivision development, uh, the property doing the development would then complete the improvements on that street, curb, gutter, sidewalk, road widening if necessary, um, but I, correct me if I'm wrong, Andy, I would imagine when we get into the engineering details, should this move forward, it would be determined if that is necessary at this time, or better handled at a later date, um, so they could bond for those improvements rather than install them if it creates more problems than it solves, um, so that...
The sidewalk, um, can you write, I think, well, very large, there's a walk up and down, right, where, um, the property on both sides, there's some sidewalk.
Okay. Yeah, and with the, uh, I think the last note that I made, and then if the commission would like to take more questions, uh, what it would look like, the specific house design, in essence, the way this is laid out, its backyard's up against it, um, if the planning commission determined that this development's different enough from surrounding uses, our ordinance does allow for, like, a privacy fence, um, could be a condition of approval, um, to be placed in that. Um, so, again, pretty generic preliminary details at this point, but based on the content information that we're hearing and the feedback from the planning commission, we could further explore those if needed, either at the final plat if that feels appropriate, or prior to granting a preliminary plat approval if, if necessary.
Could you come to the lectern, please? Could you come to the lectern, please? State your name.
So my name's Adam Howard, um, I'm Serena's husband, but right across the street there, um, in front of the seminary building, kind of on the south end, there is a culvert that's already in the curb and gutter, and I don't know if there's a possibility of tying, you know, across the street into that existing culvert, to where that water issue doesn't create a pond in front of our house every single time it rains, because it all drains from both, and we, you know, we're the low spot on the road, and so it, right now, I mean, you can go down there after any rainstorm, and literally, it's from me to you.
Right.
All the way up to our sidewalk, so...
So again, to kind of reiterate what city staff had said, um, at this, at this particular moment with this, we're looking at the rezone and the preliminary plat, and that's why details are kind of not real concrete right now. They haven't, you know, the, Mr. Bags and Ms. Peterson haven't done any engineering, they haven't moved forward with anything, you know, so it's kind of conceptual at this point, um...
Yeah, and we have no problems with it going in.
Right.
I just can foresee if they're putting in new curb and gutter, it's all going to that road, and it's all going in front of our house.
Right, and I'm sure, I mean, I can't speak with absolute certainty, but I can, I mean, I, I'm sure that those, those issues will be addressed, you know, during the civil engineering process of all this, so...
And we appreciate the comments, so we can make sure we're looking at them, knowing that those are concerns.
Yeah, thank you.
And, um, so, you said on the private street, Lyle, that, um, the curb and gutter is required, but not necessarily sidewalk.
That's accurate.
Sunset will require...
Yeah.
Full improvements.
Right.
Thank you.
Okay, so, how do we, so, do you wanna most, I mean, I don't wanna put the cart before the horse here or anything, but I mean, if there's any other discussion, fine, but, do we need to, we'll make a motion on this, and then we will open another public hearing with regard to the, you know, with the, um...
The plat itself.
Yeah, the plat itself, and that...
Yeah, that would be appropriate.
Okay, all right. Okay, so, any other questions, discussion amongst us here with the commission, uh, with regard to the actual rezone, specific?
I have just some input, um, those were very intelligent questions and observations by the Howards, and so I really appreciate you coming, and, um, those would be kind of my same questions, so, it's true that the engineering gets figured out, and that any new development is supposed to handle its own water, to not increase water outside of it. Um, traffic is definitely a problem around there, so I, I get that. Um, the water shares question, um, I did learn about water shares, um, in this last campaign. There's, uh, four different companies that service our irrigation over there, so, um, I don't know, was anyone able to answer that question about the development and how they get their irrigation water?
Yeah, it's right on the border, I believe it's served by Hades Creek Irrigation Company, and they're responsible to take care of their system.
Yeah.
Ordinance simply says that you will meet their requirements.
Okay. Okay, thank you for that. So I, I don't know, have you, maybe if one of you could come back to the podium, I just have a quick question about your, what's your experience is with the...
So...
'Cause some, some, I, I know about how it works, but I, have you noticed a change since, how long have you lived in your property?
So we've been there about six, about six years. We bought it from, um, Steve Miller.
Mm-hmm.
His wife was coy, and, you know, she passed away, but, you know, they used to, you know, have like, a, a little nursery that they had there in the property, and then, I think that they sold some of their plants and things to Kaysville City, actually, but, um, but, so you have to have so many water shares per acre through Hates, Hates Creek,
Right.
is who it is, but there's also a line that, that ties in through the Weber Water District.
Uh-huh.
And so, so you pay Hates Creek, but we're actually, you know, and then a lot of those houses across there have wells.
Yes.
That are all in the back room, and so, um, you know, ours is one of those that have a well.
Okay. So you don't have any...
But as, as far as I know, there's plenty of water shares there for that piece of property, because we were pretty good friends with the, with the Hoffmans that moved out.
Mm-hmm.
So I don't think that the water shares is really, you know, an issue, because there's already a line that ties in there, so...
Okay.
Um, I'm mainly just concerned about the drainage.
Okay.
The only thing I'm...
Sometimes, from what I learned, water shares come with a property, and sometimes they do not, depending on what people chose to do. They don't have to, huh?
No.
That's what I learned.
You know, because we bought ours, ours didn't come with the water shares, and then the owner said, "Hey, you know what, if you wanna buy my water shares, we can do that", you know, and so we ended up buying his.
Right.
Um, when we moved in, and it was a little bit of a sting, but...
Yes. I, yeah, that's...
But, yeah, anyways, but I think that there was plenty of water shares on that property, and I don't know if they purchased those from, from the Hoffmans and the people that live next door, but...
Okay, thank you.
I'm pretty sure they did.
Thanks so much for clarifying that. So, anyway, with the traffic, um, we do have to kind of think about trips, you know, and being able to get out on, on the road during the difficult times, so that's kind of my questions and thoughts so far.
Because there's still quite a bit of developable land, as you look at that, those sections, a lot of, a lot of narrow lots, I, I think what, what the Petersons and Bags have done combining makes it conducive, you can't, the others are, the frontage is fairly narrow, which makes it very difficult unless you do combine lots, but there, there is a potential in the future of, of, you know, more residential, more traffic, and, uh, the road Sunset right now, the school impacts it because of the, the traffic for drop-off and pickup, but, has there been engineering studies, traffic studies, through this particular corridor, to know what the, the capacity is for basically future growth?
Um, it's been a few years since we've done that, um, generically. When you start talking capacity, that's way more cars than what you're comfortable living next to, so, the capacity here is not projected to ever be exceeded, with the land that's available to be used on it. It may be more traffic than you would care to have driving past your front door.
And especially during the times of school.
And every school in the city has that concern with it, 'cause it's really busy for fifteen, twenty minutes a couple times a day.
Yeah. So I'm just kind of curious, Andy, south of that particular proposed development, um, was there enough space to be able to do, like, flags, flag lots, if people wanted to develop another lot behind them?
Um, this is a, a little bit of an awkward area in town.
Yeah.
Um, as was mentioned, the frontages on all these properties is typically around a hundred feet, which doesn't lend itself well to a flag lot.
Can't really fit it, can you?
Um, we do have, we did have, when this development to the south, we required a stub road in, um, that could come in, maybe be a cul-de-sac here, it could come in and go down and back out.
Right.
So we've tried to provide reasonable accommodation for those lots to develop, but it's very difficult to get six or eight people who all want to sell their property and develop all at the same time.
Yeah.
So, you know, if, if this guy were ready to go, we would likely allow him to extend that road, and he could get one or two lots, and, and do it one lot at a time. Um, it's difficult, you know, if this guy wants to develop his backyard and nobody around him cares to...
Yeah.
Um, frankly, I think he's just stuck until he can work something out, but, I think we've provided reasonable accommodation, this type of development, you know, if three more wanted to join together and do the same thing, I don't know what else we can do along this area, where it's bordered with the rail trail on one side and that major street on the other side, it's...
Yeah.
It's not ideal, but, this, this type of situation is probably as good as we'll see along here.
And is Shepherd on the list for getting road, an update to it coming up?
Sunset.
And, oh, I mean Sunset.
Sunset.
Sunset, isn't that scheduled maybe for next summer, possibly, for...
Possibly.
Being redone, and...
It's on the, certainly on the list, it's not a cheap project, it's...
Right.
Big road.
Sidewalks, and, right, I mean, that's part of the plan to fully improve that road.
That's in the discussion, certainly, yes.
Yeah.
Again, this property would be required to, at least be responsible for that along their frontage.
Mm-hmm, right. Thank you.
What's the length of the, uh, the, it's on the list, so, so what, what is actually on the list? Where would those improvements be, and would it be full improvements for the width of Sunset, from start to finish, where?
What we're actually having designed right now is full improvements from Old Mill Lane to Shepherd Lane, so that's all of it, and that's more than we'll be able to build in one season, based on our funding.
And, and, so in other words, when, it's not a matter of if, it's a matter of when it happens, that means, just, just so everyone's clear, that means improvements, one-foot sidewalk to the back of sidewalk on both sides.
That's correct.
Everything else in between.
That's, that's the goal.
Yeah, okay.
So a lot of those homes that are already have curb and gutter to a certain point coming down the road on, on the north side, um, but they don't have sidewalk, and so, I mean, I guess a few of them down very far in, kind of down...
That's correct. It, it's intermittent, curb and gutters here and there, sidewalks here and there.
It is.
The idea would be to make full improvements on all properties that...
Yeah.
Again, um, it's very expansive, it's not gonna all happen in one season.
Yeah.
Right.
Thank you. We all look forward to that.
Okay, uh, so, um, with regard to the rezone then, um, questions addressed, uh, do we wanna get a motion then for Agenda Item Number Three, the rezone request?
So let me just, I'll just, I, I mean, I can make a motion, but let me explain why I think it makes sense.
Sure.
Uh, so in the general plan, uh, in fact, I think it references it in the staff report, the general plan essentially says, if there is going to be, uh, changes to zoning in Kaysville that is west of I-15, uh, the, for lack of a better term, or to simplify it, the density is, uh, two units per acre, which is not half-acre lots, and this proposal meets the general plan because it's not more than two units per acre. The LD zone allows some flexibility on the sizes of the lot, so, some of the lots may be smaller than, and will be, it looks like, smaller than half an acre, but the overall density is still the same. Um, from what I've heard, the capa, the traffic capacity on Sunset is more than adequate despite the, the, uh, you know, increases during school hours, um, there really isn't much more consideration than that. I don't think it's gonna change the character of the neighborhood terribly to rezone this. Um, there are other LDs of similar size and shape in the vicinity, and so, for that reason, it makes sense to rezone it, um, to me. So I, I, then I'll make a motion that we recommend, uh, that this property be rezoned from A1 Light Agricultural to R1 LD, Single Family Residential.
Second there.
Aye.
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 Do you mind addressing the PRUD piece of that?
Um, so, I mean, I can either make an additional motion, or just wrap it in my motion that the PRU, PRUD overlay was inherent in my motion. Was anybody in disagreement with that? Is that right?
Since you already voted, let's just make a new motion.
Oh, make a new motion. So, then I recommend we approve the PRUD overlay for this same property.
I'll second.
Aye.
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 Thank you.
So number, Agenda Item Number Four, which ties in directly with Three, uh, public hearing is attached to this one as well, um, this is for the preliminary plat approval, which was given to us, and again, this is preliminary at best, um, kind of a conceptual idea. Uh, public hearing, preliminary plat approval for the Peterson subdivision, uh, we can go ahead and open the public hearing on this now, although I think probably you guys' concerns have already been addressed, right? Yeah? Go ahead and close the public hearing on that then. Uh... Go ahead and close the public hearing on that then. Uh, we'll open it up here to the commission and to city staff.
My only question is, we must not have it in our ordinances that, that a development like this is required to have its own sidewalk on one side, say, right? Because it's private lane.
In our private lane subdivision ordinance into the PRUD zoning, it says private lanes are required to have some sort of curbing, but sidewalk is not necessarily required. If you feel there's a reason for it, um, you can make that recommendation.
I just feel super strongly about sidewalks and especially when, um, most likely there will be families with children who, who, um, will be looking at those properties. And I live in a cul-de-sac. And it can get really busy in my cul-de-sac, you know, so I just really like that, that younger people and even adults are not forced to do their walking to the neighbors or to the school in the street. So I, I think I feel pretty strongly about having sidewalks.
But you're talking about down the private lane, right?
Down the private lane.
On, on Sunset, that's going to be part of it.
It's a given.
That's mandatory.
Yeah. So yeah, I feel it on the, I feel strongly about it even in the private lane.
So if that's the case, then we can tap that into our motion. On the preliminary. On the preliminary.
One that's reinforced.
Right.
I don't know if you all have opinions on that.
I agree. So.
What would be, if this, if this were not a private lane hypothetically, if this were a, uh, the smallest full width right of way, what is that, uh, dimension?
Fifty-five feet is our.
So this is less than half of that.
Yeah, that's twice and then some.
That's correct, yeah. Now fifty-five feet includes the park strip, sidewalk, the buffer, so there's.
Yeah.
Actually thirty feet of asphalt. This typically has about a twenty-four foot driving surface on it.
So, so as this is proposed, then, uh, the twenty-four foot private lane is, is virtually all asphalt and then whatever curb is going to be there, right?
What's common is they'll put twenty feet of asphalt and a two-foot roll curb on each side of that. That gives emergency services twenty-four feet of drivable surface, which is about their minimum.
Yeah. So if we're going to be putting a sidewalk in, we would, we would make it a little bit, we'd, we need to make it wider.
That's correct, yes.
Right.
Frequently on a private lane where sidewalks required.
Not by much.
They'll do integral curb gutter sidewalk. So it's just a four-foot sidewalk right at the back of that roll curb.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And that's not required, but that's common.
Yeah.
Well, I'm comfortable with, I mean, if, not if, when the motion's made here to certainly, um, make sidewalks mandatory on both sides.
Yeah.
So. I was going to ask that. Is there, does there, is it acceptable to have a sidewalk just on one side?
I'd prefer one side. On the private lane, I'd prefer one side personally, but.
Does that?
We've done that.
Feel the need of a sidewalk without having twice as much?
You know, and again, it depends on the configuration of the subdivision. We do have private lanes that were required sidewalk on only one side. Just so it's there if people need to use it.
I like the idea of it on both sides simply because it's, um, again, so close for kids walking to school. Um, I have a family member who lives in Somerset in Farmington where I've noticed a lot of their streets up there. It's a very nice subdivision, an older subdivision, and they don't always have it on both sides. And I think it, I think it's tricky to just not have it on both sides for getting even to neighbors' homes and not have to walk in the street or the grass. So that's kind of my thinking. And I do like it where they can save the space and not have a strip, you know, but do the roll, whatever thing you just talked about where it's all kind of in one, you know, keeps people out of the street, but it doesn't take as much space without the park strip. Um, but everyone has an option to be on a sidewalk. I like that.
We've had people come in before that have said that they, they want to maintain that rural feel of, of not having sidewalks. But, but then we've had a lot of people come in and talk about the safety concerns for their kids, especially by a school. And to me, safety outweighs, um, outweighs it. I, I think that we need to be looking at the safety of, of our residents and the people and, you know, that's, that's why I like the sidewalks. It, it provides a safe passage for, for, you know, people to walk and especially the kids.
I think just personally, two, two is overkill. This is, I understand the safety concern and that's obviously important, but th- this is essentially a glorified driveway.
Yeah.
Yeah. Yeah, I'm not opposed to one side versus two. Uh, I just think that there needs to be a safe path versus walking down the street. It's been interesting since I've moved to the, to the west side, um, I didn't have to worry about too much, you know, where I used to live because there are sidewalks everywhere, but when I'm driving, particularly in the early morning or, or night when the visibility is not too be, good because it's dark, I'm amazed how many you got people walking, people running, and there's, they're running in the roads.
Yeah, there's no other place for them.
And, uh, there's been a couple, couple of times where, you know, I've, I've had a couple of heart stoppers because all of a sudden I see somebody in front of me.
Yeah, so I think sidewalks, uh, again, I, I think sidewalk is, is fine, but, but let me just make a pitch on overkill again. Um, th- this is really only a few lots. And if we have it on one side, then someone who, who wants to be safe and needs to be safe when they're wa, a kid, a child who's walking to the junior high or the elementary school out of this subdivision has to walk twenty-four feet across the road to get onto that sidewalk. And this is not a thoroughfare. This is cars coming in essentially their glorified driveway. And so two just seem, it just seems too much to me. It's, it's really minor. I, I get it, but.
Yeah.
But, but here's the thing, uh, it costs money. It costs land and dollars to install this site. And if, if one accomplishes the purpose that we're seeking, why make the developer or the property owners spend the extra money and the land to overkill the purpose we're seeking to address?
Yeah, and I think your if is the big if. I don't, I'm not convinced that it, one does. I mean, I, I'm, I'm not saying I don't believe it does. I'm just not convinced. I, I think people will, I wonder if they'll cross the street to get to the sidewalk unless, if they're going, like, for example, if they're going south and there's someone, let's say the sidewalk's on the north side, would they cross the street, walk up two houses and then cross the street to go down south or vice versa? I don't, I, I wouldn't.
Probably, probably not.
No, they won't.
And I don't know if it's that important, but I, you know, that's the question is, are we going to be safe for half the su, half the cul-de-sac and not the other half?
I live, um, in a cul-de-sac. It's probably shorter than that. I am the end house. And I use sidewalks on both sides, depending on whether I'm going to be turning right or turning left. I, I go and so I'm certain that they will get used on both sides if they are there.
I, I just think this is, this is not a road that we're talking about with curb and gutter. It's a, it is a driveway.
Yeah.
So.
Perhaps it's something for the commission to consider where the applicant has suggested that they'd be willing to come and speak to it more. Perhaps they're already planning on something that I'm not aware of.
Sure.
Yeah.
Uh, you're welcome to make a decision, but if, if it's too hard to, to come to consensus or place a vote, we could request their input.
You know, if they're going to fence it in, that was another question that Mrs. Howard asked, was fencing.
Right.
And I mean, couldn't we say?
I'd hate.
Address sidewalks and at the final plat, if there's one or two, we can really decide.
I think that's, yeah, I'd rather do that than table this and wait for the applicants to get here and stuff and that, so.
Yeah.
So with that being said, do you have a quick question?
You said it's going to be private roads.
Yes.
Yes.
Yeah. Yes.
Correct.
Do you know what they could be, what would be, is that what they would be doing subdivision, where they put the power under the ground instead of overhead? Are they going to tie that line that's out from down there?
I have no idea and the applicant's not here and I, I, I don't know.
So there is a, a street, Sunset actually runs directly into the wind and it might be not private, right?
Yes.
Right.
I would guess that, uh, uh, power is going to be underground.
Most cases in the development, it's not an ordinance, but in most cases it, we put power underground at this point. For most situations, it's just as cheap to put it underground and it's a little bit safer there. So typically new development all has underground power.
Um, the other thing that I'll mention that I think's already been addressed, but just to clarify, uh, it, you know, it, it, when there's a motion made, um, my, uh, my position in favor of this plat is assuming that, uh, the engineering issues that have been mentioned, namely water, uh, and others, will be addressed at the final plat, so.
Right. So with that being said then, could we get a, we're going to get a tailored motion here that's going to be kind of specific to things, yes?
I just mentioned a minute ago and, and the public spoke to the fencing issue.
Right.
Um, ordinance states that a permanent solid opaque fence, um, six feet shall be installed for building, um, adjacent to the subdivisions where adjacent uses are found to be non-compatible by the planning commission. So where that question was asked, I think it would be worth your discussion for just a couple of minutes to determine if you feel that, uh, adjacent properties are incompatible to the point where a fence should be required by the city.
My feeling is, I, I think it is. It, it conforms to the neighborhood. I, I think the R1 LD, we've got it throughout, but, but to border onto a light agricultural that may have horses and other livestock and farm animals on, I don't, I don't think it, it, it is compatible in that sense. It conforms, but it's not compatible to the adjoining property owners. So my feeling is I would, I would make that a condition that they have to fence it.
That they have to fence it, yes, on all sides. Excluding the.
I agree with the fence for sure.
Well, don't we have to know what the uses are on either side of it before we can decide whether it's?
It's the zoning.
Well, it's A1.
It's, it's the zoning.
It's whatever you can do, yeah.
The, the.
It's use, it doesn't seem to.
The fence cuts both ways. I understand the, the north, northern property owner wants a fence, but, uh, if it's a white vinyl fence, it, it tends to aesthetically distract from the more rural nature of the area. It's a total aesthetic concern, but, uh, in, aside from privacy.
I'm not a fan.
I, I'm not, I'm not saying a position either way on it. I'm just pointing that out.
Right. Well, on the lot, on the south, doesn't look like there's any. Yeah, there's, there's nothing there.
It's currently vacant.
Coming in for a compatible use, but. So fencing where required or fencing as required?
I think you've made motions in the past, something to the fencing is agreeable for neighbors, um, as, as another alternative if there's.
Yeah, because I don't, I, I wouldn't, I, I don't think it's needed on the east property line, the east border.
No, along the rail trail?
Yeah.
No.
I mean, the property owners can always, when they buy it, they can put one in themselves, but in terms of requiring it upfront, you know, uh, only, only because the concerns have been raised by the north property owner, I would, I would say at most at this stage, we would require it along the entire north property line.
Well, do we even need it along the entire line? I mean, I don't, uh, again, that back usage, I don't know what. What do you do in the back half of the lot there? What's the use?
Mow.
Mow. That sounds fun.
We are.
You are putting horses.
Well, the, pretty much the back, it's there to the top three is either, uh, two gardens and, and then there's acre jail back for farm now.
Yeah, right.
There is a fence that's existing there right now that's, you know, about four feet high. The back half of that fence, um, is, is built with steel pipe. So the top rail is an actual water line that you can tie and spill water into and then, you know, irrigate with. Um, so, you know, I mean, if they do put a fence in there, my concern would be, are they going to want to tear down the one that's existing there right now?
So you actually.
Do you have any need of it?
Yeah.
Well, that's what I was stating, that, you know, per, you know, discretion, I mean, you know.
What, I mean, could we, could we say, encourage the own, the applicant to talk to, to the northern property owners and work something out that's agreeable then they bring it back at the final plat?
I would say they talk to both adjoining properties as well, because is that an active, do you actually tie into that and use that?
Oh, yeah. Yeah.
Oh, yeah. So if that were to go away, that would, that would hurt.
The heads off of the, off of the line, but, I mean, I used to own a fence company and I used to have to deal with these property lines all the time. And I wouldn't want to get rid of that existing fence that's already there just because I know that's a lot more expensive than a six-foot vinyl privacy fence.
Sure. What are we talking about?
It's a good point.
So I mean, if they did put a fence in, then I would want to, you know, kiss the other side of the one that's existing. Does that make sense?
Yeah.
And I just don't want five property owners coming over to me and saying, hey, we used to put the fence real quick. We used to put the fence, that type of thing.
Yeah.
Because I'm not paying for however many feet that is all the way back.
So, so. So if we don't want to change, then maybe we're, we don't need to legislate, I mean, to require one.
I, I like.
I'm not sure what we're doing here.
I like Josh's thing that we, we have him talk with the, uh, adjoining property owners. Because you, you kind of hit both sides of it. One is if the fence goes down, you, you stand a chance of losing that, that active irrigation line that you've got. But on the other hand, if they don't do something, then you're going to have five property owners come and saying, hey, I've got four hundred feet here or whatever and, you know, twenty, twenty, twenty-four, twenty-five bucks a foot.
Right.
That's a lot of money to split. So in one sense, that, that's why I'm thinking we talk to them and, and, and have them work. We've done that before, have the developer talk with the adjoining owners and, and get a sense. Because I don't want to require a fence now if it's going to hurt you, but on the other hand, you know, if, if, if they can come to some compromise that is amenable to you and the other joint property owner and the developer, because it, it's going to come up at some point.
So if the commission wanted to, as a recommending body here, the commission could, could recommend approval of the preliminary plat and that staff address the fencing issue before it's seen by, uh, I don't know if that's, before it comes back.
Before it comes back to final plat.
Yeah, because it, it sounds like without the applicant here, it's somewhat difficult to comprehend. So we could table it or you could table it or you could recommend approval that, and with that issue being addressed before final plat.
And same with the people on the other side? Is there, there's not a, it's like that.
Both fencing around the whole issue.
Well, that is, that whole lot's vacant.
It's currently unused.
Vacant lot right there. There's not a house on there. Yeah, I just noticed that too.
Right. Right.
Okay, are those two lots owned by the, the property owner just to the south end, the three, three lots over?
I don't know.
Just curious, it doesn't matter if it.
Do you know?
Oh, I was just, I was just wondering that, because you got the two vacant lots and the third lot to the south, there's a house on. I was wondering if that homeowner of that property owns the other two vacant lots.
I don't, but it is, it's separate ownership for those. I think the one that owns that has to.
Yeah, because if, if, if they do, I could see after this is done, them coming to us in a year or two down the road and going.
Yeah, I know that owner. I know that owner and they only own their property, the, the Eads, the Eads. Um, so yeah, maybe the, maybe someone else owns the two immediately adjacent. Anyway.
All right.
I'll make a motion.
Yeah, make a motion, please.
So I make a motion that we recommend approval of the preliminary plat, um, for the property in agenda item number four, um, with the conditions that, uh, one, the property meets all minimum engineering requirements, uh, including water and they work with staff on that. Two, that, uh, the property owner addresses fencing by communicating with, well, by cooperating with staff and. with staff and communicating with the, the north and south property, adjacent property owners. And three, that the applicant address safety concerns by proposing either one or two sidewalks that we can review at final plat.
I'd second that.
Aye.
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 Oh, sorry. Okay, very good. On to number five, public hearing and preliminary plat approval for the preserved subdivision at 101 South Angel Street for Symphony Homes. Staff?
Probably recall this property, we went through the rezone process just in the last several weeks. Property's located down just south of Second North and east of Angel Street, highlighted in the yellow outline here. This property was also rezoned to the R1 LD zone. They've now submitted the plat. Plat is similar to the concept plan, they looked at it, rezone. As the plat currently constituted, it complies with the R1 LD zone. Again, it's two units per acre. They're right at that two units. One concern the staff had is they've got three fairly long cul-de-sacs with another cul-de-sac on the east that's much shorter. Our ordinance does not have any provision, prohibits cul-de-sacs. These meet the requirements for geometry and length and all those things. However, there's, there is some ability for the city to have some discretion to accommodate circulation and good planning. You can type cul-de-sac into Google and you'll get 1,000 articles and probably 600 will say how bad cul-de-sacs are, and the other 400 will say how good they are. So there's some discretion to be applied here. From, from the staff's perspective, having that many long cul-de-sacs primarily is, we've been talking a lot about active transportation, people getting on walking and biking, cul-de-sacs are not highly compatible with that type of philosophy because you have to walk, well, generically, the worst case scenario, if I live here and I want to play with my friend next door, I have to go 1,500 feet or more. Half the time mommy's gonna drive me to my next door neighbor's house. So there's those kind of issues of just circulation in the neighborhood. Obviously, from a emergency service perspective, the more accesses you have to property, the more desirable it is. From the public works perspective, each of these cul-de-sacs end up being a dead end water line. Again, we allow 600 foot cul-de-sacs, we have them in town, they're not our preference, but they're not illegal. So we do have the ability for some discretion in road pattern. That's something that the staff feels that the road pattern could possibly be improved here, but that's a discretionary issue.
So snow removal in cul-de-sacs, 'cause I lived in cul-de-sac for 23 years too, and we had a pile in the middle at Roundabout for a couple of times when we.
Cul-de-sacs are lowest priority for our snowplow crews, again, 'cause they serve the least amount of traffic, which is why the developer likes them. In heavy snow years, we start to run out of room and there's somewhat of a disproportionate cost to address that. So far this year, our snowplow crews have done very well. Yeah.
Yeah. Like I say, I live on a short cul-de-sac and that, that mound goes in front of my house. And it, yeah, it's pretty interesting how much snow collects when you have to do that in a cul-de-sac.
But they are, from a marketing standpoint, development standpoints, you know, they do like them 'cause they're, people like to live in cul-de-sacs.
I'd suggest that we go ahead and have the public hearing and then.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Let's go ahead then and open up the public hearing on this, public hearing for the preliminary plat approval of the preserved subdivision. Someone here wish to speak on that?
I'm Greg Brown. I live in the Mountain Vista subdivision, also the, on the HOA board, representing 188 homes in that subdivision. And while I don't speak for all of them, I speak for, for many of them. And I want to speak in favor of what we're, we're seeing here. We think that Symphony's done a very good job of putting something together that's compatible with our adjoining neighborhood, and we like a lot of the tenants associated with this. They had an open house about a week ago where they described a lot more of that to us, and so that was very helpful. However, I do have a few concerns as it relates to this. One being, and again, we don't know where in the process we want to address some of these concerns, so perhaps it may not be today, but maybe it's tomorrow. But when we talked with them, we learned that the access road coming in from Angel was not going to be in the first phase of the development. They wanted to develop from the east to the west. And so that brings up a lot of concerns to us as far as when that road would go in. And that, for many of the reasons that was just stated from an access perspective, from safety or from emergency, as well as construction traffic and things like that, we're concerned that if you build from that way in all the way out, there are only two exits out of our current development with those 188 homes. And if you add 80 more, and they told us it could take potentially up to four years before it would build out. And so I understand there's some concerns with the current property owners and their ability to continue to work the, the property until it's fully built out. But if we're gonna be adding this many homes through this many phases, potentially two of the three phases will be fully built before that access road to Angel would be constructed. And so I, we have concerns about that. We'd like to see that road be built immediately, or at least some type of temporary road, to allow access in and out of that area early on in the project, not at the end of the project. And we think that's a reasonable request to help things along the way. Otherwise, it's gonna be very difficult, as you notice how we get in and out, there's only one on the north to, to Second North, and the other one is just a little further south of the development off of Angel. As far as the cul-de-sacs go, I'm not a huge fan of those four main cul-de-sacs, but they do meet all the requirements. So that's a decision we'll leave to you guys to discuss as far as flow and things. Ideally, we would prefer two entrances into that property, vice the one, but with the existing homes, we realize that that does create a bit of a challenge. So I would respectfully request that, while we're very much in favor of the project because we think it does complement the neighborhood and would be helpful, and there's a great opportunity there, that we would stipulate that with this going forward in the preliminary plat, that the road and access to Angel be constructed, you know, immediately upon construction starting to facilitate everything going into that neighborhood.
Okay. Thank you. Anyone else wish to speak on this? Okay, we'll go ahead and close the public hearing on this, and we will open it up to city staff and to the planning commission. So Russell Wilson from Symphony Homes is here too, if you want to come up, Russ, and answer questions and things like that that we may have. So, so we'll open it up.
I do have something that stood out to me in that last one. We, you know, it was a big meeting, just even helping people not be afraid of the development. So I think that was a lot of our focus, was learning everything we could and, and sharing about the LD so people could understand that. But I, I absolutely saw the plat and thought, that's not the grid system that provides for more dispersed traffic, you know? And, and I know that, that anytime you have bottlenecks, it backs it up somewhere else, you know? And it's, that's a thing. So it was interesting to get this back before us where the staff has also kind of had that same concern. So I, I am so curious to know if you had considered any other kind of pattern for the roads, and I know it would be less homes, but certainly there are pros and cons to that, that design right there.
Yeah. I appreciate that question. Symphony Homes, when we design a subdivision, we're very particular in the dimensions of our lots. We don't like to go down to the smallest, you know, the minimum size and the minimum widths. We look very hard at specific widths. A lot of these, probably almost all of these lots exceed the minimum in size and in width. We actually go through and we fit a handful of floor plans to each specific lot within a subdivision. That's really important to us. The reason for the cul-de-sacs, we, we've done a lot of developing over the years, and especially out in West Kaysville, we love West Kaysville, and always in our new subdivisions, people prefer cul-de-sac lots. Those are always the first to sell. They, they love the privacy. It allows for a little bit larger lots as you move closer to the bulb of the cul-de-sac, and they don't like the cut-through traffic that sometimes happens on some of the longer straightaways. So anytime we can have a dead end, we, we prefer to design it that way. We did look at an, at an alternative, it was actually the, the same alternative that Andy Thompson showed us, to connect two cul-de-sacs, this one connected to this cul-de-sac and then shortening this cul-de-sac down to here. When we did that, we, we lost a couple of lots, and the remaining lots were just narrower than what we would, what we would prefer. As you get narrower lots, you really start to eliminate the amount of floor plans that we have available. We're more of a semi-custom home builder, so a lot of our floor plans are rambler floor plans that are a lot wider than, than normal. So that, you know, that's, that's been looked at. Our preference is to not do that for those reasons. When, when we start losing two to three lots, we, we start to, you know, budget-wise, we start to wonder if, if we've got enough money set aside for our open space amenities. This is intended to be a, a community gathering area where we're going to have a pool and a park area similar to what we've done in our Sunset Equestrian neighborhood.
Okay.
Is the same true if you just connected the two middle cul-de-sacs? Just did a smaller soon?
Yeah, yeah, wherever you, wherever you connect cul-de-sacs, you're, you're always gonna lose, always gonna lose some lots. And they, like I, like I mentioned, they do tend to, to get narrower as well. We would be down to the, I think the minimum width in, in the LD zone is 90 feet, so we would probably be getting down to 90 feet.
Well, if you connected those two, you'd only miss two lots at the most. I mean, I don't, I don't think you'd miss two, but at the most it'd be two, right?
So my thought is, there's a solution, can I see your pointer?
Yeah.
That gets, gets rid of all cul-de-sacs and only loses two lots by my calculation. Just, this is, I didn't have time to give it to the staff, so I'll just pass it around.
Hmm.
If we connect, oh, this is pretty weak. Okay, there we go. If we connect from there over to there.
Their other side.
That loses two lots. And, and my guess is, because it sounds like the widths are more than the minimum, you could make some lots somewhere on here, the minimum, and maybe even pick up one, possibly two extra lots. My preference would be to do away with all the cul-de-sacs and connect that one to that one. Because, I mean, really for three reasons, and Andy kind of addressed some of these, but at least three reasons why. Because cul-de-sacs, as it's proposed, reduces the neighborhood connection. And, and Andy, Andy used the example where this, this guy wants to go talk to his buddy over here and he has to walk there. I'm saying, what if this guy wants to go talk to his buddy over here? He's gotta walk clear down here and around, whereas if they're connected, he just walks down the street. So it reduces neighborhood connection to have four cul-de-sacs as proposed. It promotes a dependency on cars because, again, what like Andy said, maybe, maybe not get in your car and go here, but you might get, in this day and age, would not be surprising if you get in your car and drive over to here. And, and to the extent we can, to the extent that, that our little planning principles can get people out of their houses and walking around their neighborhoods more, I think we should strive for that. And, and having these four is less likely to promote that as, than, than say what I've proposed. And then the, the third reason is, and maybe this might be the most important, it unevenly distributes traffic. So if you have the connection like I'm proposing, all of the roads have a more even distribution of the traffic load. Now, I'm not saying, traffic load is not very much to begin with, but it still promotes, most of the traffic that comes through this neighborhood has to go on this road.
Yeah.
Whereas if this is connected, this road has a little less burden of the traffic.
Right.
And it's, and the other problem with that is, if you go to the broader view, once there's a connection made over to 200 North right here, this road really runs a risk of becoming a thoroughfare, or not a, not a thoroughfare, a shortcut, where people would, instead of going down here to this potential light, or this light that's gonna be here, they're gonna cut through, right through here. And if you, if you, if, if you think about that, as much as we can alleviate some traffic on this road, I think we should. And so doing it as I've proposed, I think, at least is in the direction of accomplishing that. So.
What is the timing? You mentioned in your letter, the Harvey property. I know you're negotiating with them right now, from what I understand, aren't you?
No, we're not. We haven't had any discussions.
So you don't have any timeline for when that would come through?
No, I, as far as I know, the Harveys are selling their property.
Yeah, one of them said they have no plans to sell their property in the last public meeting.
I mean, maybe 10 years, maybe 50 years, maybe 100 years, it's gonna happen.
Oh, yeah, eventually.
Maybe tomorrow though, too. There've been plenty of people that said, I'm never gonna sell, and then.
Yeah. No, we have to plan for when it will. It will eventually develop. Yeah, I don't know if, did anyone else have a chance to see this over here? Josh?
Yeah, I think he's.
They have.
I don't know. That's, that's actually a good suggestion, 'cause I was thinking where you could alleviate some of it was put, you know, between homes, you know, the walking paths, we've done that in a couple others where you put sidewalks between, you know, to join those cul-de-sacs, but that'd be just from a pedestrian standpoint, not from a, a traffic standpoint, vehicular standpoint.
Yeah, I, I like those ideas you've had, actually.
I actually like that, too. It makes sense as far as the dispersing the traffic and trying to cut down on what eventually could become a heavy traffic road.
So how many did you lose with that?
It, it was 80. Because, correct me if I'm wrong, the lots 201 and 202 on, on Angel are included in the calculation of 82 lots, right?
That's correct.
That's correct.
Okay. So then, yeah, it's just 80 lots. And, and keep in mind, I didn't have AutoCAD, there's no dimensions, it was total conceptual, but, but I'm pretty sure you could get at least 80 and possibly another one or two. Another question I had is parcel B detention, is that what that's gonna be?
Yeah, it's detention.
Okay. And then parcel A is the community center, or whatever you're gonna do, right?
Pool and park and whatnot.
Yeah, okay.
And then, so I do like that idea that Josh did propose. Let me throw this out for you. So we do have some concern about, although I do understand, though, with the phasing, going from the east to the west, and, you know, because of the Websters and their active farming and things like that, is there any possibility at all of being able to construct even a temporary road or some kind of a thoroughfare? Probably not, right? I mean, if they're actively using that land, I think that kind of hamstrings us to.
I don't know. Andy, do you have the phasing plan on, on your presentation?
I don't have a phasing.
No.
Okay. So the first phase is gonna be a total of 25 lots. It's gonna be right here. And the only, the only access to that will be Morning Mist Lane right here. And so I've, when I, we had the neighborhood meeting the other night, I told the residents that most likely, I would imagine that our construction traffic isn't gonna come off 200 North this way, 'cause this is a really, this is gonna be a really hard corner to make. I would envision they would come down Angel up this way, straight into the subdivision. That will be the only access for the 25 lots for, you know, maybe a year, year and a half until we develop phase two, which will actually make the connect. which will actually make the connection to this, uh, this other road. I can't remember what it's called. And then our third phase will, you know, fall shortly thereafter, which will make the final connection to Angel Street. Making the connection to Angel Street sooner than later just wasn't a possibility for the Webster family because they've, for, for a few reasons. This, this part of their property, they've, they've got a alfalfa field, hayfields that they, that they operate. And then this portion of their property, they have cattle. They've got a, they've got a big hay barn right here. And then also, they've got, they've got a man-made irrigation pond right here with all kinds of irrigation streams coming down this way. And we just can't mess with those for the time being for the cattle.
So then the answer is no, essentially.
Yeah.
So to honor the people selling and letting them.
Yeah, that was, that was part of our agreement with them.
Oh, I see, you have an actual agreement.
This way, that was, that was part of the agreement from the, from the very beginning.
Hmm. 'Cause I, I think the construction traffic will come down the road where the neighbors think that it will. That's all such a lo- much longer way around.
Yeah, may, maybe some. I, I, you know, when you're bringing in fill with your, your big, your big long trucks, that's gonna be a difficult corner to make right there.
Uh-huh, yeah, the big, the biggest ones, maybe they won't be able to, but a lot of it, they'll, they'll definitely see increased stuff.
So are the, are the sellers gonna sell you, are you gonna, you're gonna own that property, though, right?
They, they are going to own it, so we're buying it in phases, three phases.
Oh, okay.
Yep. And then, you know, depending on how sales go, we'll, we may, you know, we may develop sooner than later.
Right.
So just two more comments that I have. One's a concern, one's not a concern. The first one is, if we did, you know, I'm not saying mine's the, the concept I sent around is, is the solution, but if we did something like that and it ended up being 80 lots, that is technically just shy of the two units per acre. 'Cause two uni- two units per acre is 82 and some change of lots, I think.
Right.
And we don't build partial lots, right?
Yeah, right, right. So 80, so 82 lots is, is meeting the spirit of, of the general plan. 80 lots is just shy of the spirit of the general plan. So, I mean, that, that may be a concern.
I don't see that being a big concern, though.
Okay, so, so that was the one thing. The other one is, you know, the, one thing, you know, Mr. Wilson mentioned is if we did say 80 lots, then that, then that causes them to have to relook at their numbers. And I understand that. And, uh, you know, something to consider is, at least in the current market, and of course, we know things change, but the current market and I think the foreseeable market, my guess is that they're gonna be not having a problem making a profit on this, even at 80 lots and a community center. And I, I recognize that's a complete, that's a, that's a total assumption on my part, but I think it's a safe assumption, in my opinion. So reducing it to 80 lots is, is not a concern from that standpoint, in my opinion.
I, I appreciate the, the design you presented. I think one of the, a few of the concerns that we would have with this, this type of a design is the amount of corner lots that, that we would have. Those are always our least desirable lots, just because they have a, a, a more strict setback. They've got a, a greater setback on the corner. And, um, this would, I mean, this would essentially double or even triple the amount of corner lots and we'd have to go through and reprice, reprice all of those lots, corner versus cul-de-sac lot. And so that could, that could have a pretty significant effect on our financial performance.
I'm not saying that we would do this or, or even if we can, but if it's a, if it's a setback problem, could we massage the setbacks on corner lots for this subdivision or would that not be advisable?
No, setbacks are set by ordinance.
Right, and what I'm saying, like, let's say hypothetically, we did a development agreement. Could we modify those for the, what we would care? I'm not saying we should, I'm just hypothetically, is this an option? We would say, this, the unique characteristics of this development, we are going to change that in a development agreement.
No, I don't think so.
It's not advisable. I think there's, there's probably a way we could pull it off and make it all legal.
Yeah.
But I wouldn't suggest that.
What if you did a combination? 'Cause I, I do think traffic closure is something we really need to consider. What if, rather than having it run all the way through, maybe you take those two center cul-de-sacs, tie those in, so it's kinda like a horseshoe coming out. You narrow the lots a little bit, so you don't lose any lots. And then, then in between the other cul-de-sacs, on the opposite sides, you, you do that walking path, maybe between a couple homes. You're accommodating vehicular and pedestrian traffic flow and you're trying to create, create communities. Your, your little common area that you've got, you're, you're, one thing I like about Symphony Developments is you do create a community. This, with the cul-de-sacs, it, you create cul-de-sac communities, but I, I think you kinda take away from, uh, community is the whole, from the whole HOA. If you add that, maybe those center two tie together and then those maybe walking paths and you're connecting everything together and you don't lose any lots.
So, I mean, I, I, I recognize and I understand the, the conundrum that Symphony would face with the corner lots, but my response to that would be, at least in part, if you look at what, what in my opinion is the gold standard for a, a neo-traditional residential development, at least in Utah, it's Daybreak. And there's not a single cul-de-sac in all of Daybreak. And it's arguably one of the best-selling developments along the Wasatch Front in the last 15 years. So I, I don't think that corner lots, and, and then bring it, bring it more locally, the, the closest example to Daybreak in Kaysville is, is Destination just up the street. There's no cul- there's no, there's no cul-de-sacs there, which means there's plenty of corner lots. And that's a, I'm pretty sure if Destination came in here, they'd say it has sold very well. So, um.
I think we've got two very different clientele, Daybreak, Destination, very, very different homes. Which, what we're trying to get away from is the, the traditional tract home and create more larger estate lots. And along with that, people like, people like privacy. They like less traffic. As far as connectivity goes, I'm, I'm not so sure that they, that they would like pedestrian trails, you know, running in between their lot from a privacy standpoint.
Yeah, and, and I, I personally wouldn't be a favor of cut-through trails like that. Which is why I don't want cul-de-sacs at all. So, and I, I get, there's both sides to this and I understand, I understand, I think, what Symphony's side is generally. I, I just think we have.
If we wanted to do something similar to what Destination had, has done, we would, we would have requested a way different zoning and.
Well, I'm not, I'm not, I'm not saying, I'm not saying that you, you should or are doing something that Destination's doing. I'm just saying that corner lots, as an anecdote, sell, at, at least in, but I, I get your clientele argument.
There's no question that, I mean, your design takes away, one, two, three, four, five, six, I mean, takes away.
Big lots.
14, 15 of their best lots and turns them into corner lots. So I, I mean, I don't think there's any question that it's a, it's a, it's a shift in the price point for the lots they could sell. The, the question we have is whether, you know, whether the plan in front of us is acceptable.
Sustainable.
Well, yeah, acceptable, that's right. 'Cause what we have to do is we have to say, what's more important?
Connectivity.
This, this whole notion of connectivity for the, for at least the three reasons that I listed and many of the others that I've already even said, or, uh, what, what, what the, what the prop, what the developer is telling us the market will do. And, um, we have to, we have to decide that. And I, and I, reasonable minds differ on both sides.
Well, I can, I can take a look at this right here, this preliminary plat, the way it's been presented to us this evening right now. And without even much thought process at all, I can think of about a dozen, uh, at least just off the top of my head, or more, um, neighborhoods that nearly identical mirror this setup and this, you know? And they're anywhere from 30 years old to two years old, you know?
With the long cul-de-sacs, oh, in a row like that?
I actually brought some, some pictures if, if I can.
I mean, it's, people like it. I mean, you know, and it, that's the bottom line of it. I mean, as much as I hate to put it that way, I mean, it's.
In Kaysville, you have pictures of that? I would love to see those. Thank you. Thank you.
So.
Just to guess the other thing, doesn't meet the requirements.
It does. I mean, I guess that, I mean, just because it does, I mean, just because you can doesn't mean you should, though, too. I mean, that's, that, that's kinda the, the quandary, you know, where we're at, too, so.
This is in our neighborhood.
And, you know, personally, I'm not, I'm not as much concerned about what's been done elsewhere in Kaysville, what's been done in the past. Uh, I, I would imagine that though, some of those pictures show good examples.
Oh, yeah, some are.
And some show bad examples and, and, um, yeah. I think I've made my position clear.
Mr. Wilson, just, just for our record, can we have these photos?
Yep.
And Mr. Sunloff, can we have your drawing as well?
Yep, yes, yep.
Just looking at some of these, we're talking, these, this looks like this is probably down in Hess Farms area, which is an R18. So your lot size is gonna be 8,500 square feet or so. So the cul-de-sac, the depths of these cul-de-sacs are probably a lot more shallow. Just, just kinda looking.
I'm familiar with all of these.
Without you knowing what we're talking about.
I'm familiar with all of those, um, where there's the cul-de-sacs close together, so I know why you chose them. And, and it shows how sometimes there's a road with several different cul-de-sacs off of it. The difference from what I, from, my memory is that these are very much longer cul-de-sacs than any of.
Yeah, they are. These, these two first cul-de-sacs right here, I think are exactly 600 feet, which is your maximum length. This one's, I can't remember, 5, 40, 50 range and I don't think that one's a concern, but.
You see that?
Looks like these here are, that's the R120s on, I think.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So what we have before us then is to accept this as is. Or to have Symphony Homes kinda go back to the drawing board, I guess, and, you know, propose something different, addressing the concerns that we've outlaid here this evening. I think, I think that's kinda where we stand right now with this, correct?
Yeah.
So.
Generically, you have three options. You can either recommend approval as proposed. You can recommend denial as proposed. Actually, I can think of four now. You could recommend approval subject to modification. Or probably better than that, if modification's extreme, which I think we're talking about, you could table it subject to reviewing a different thing. With a direction as to why you were tabling it and what would be acceptable based on that.
My, go ahead, ma'am.
Well, I just was gonna ask, if we forward a negative, uh, recommendation to not approve, do they then have to go to the city council or can they come back to us with a modified preliminary plan? Goes to the city council. At this point, you just recommend it.
Yeah. They can go to the city council with a negative recommendation from the planning commission. If they feel that that will have great bearing, they can go back and bring another preliminary plat to the planning commission before they proceed forward.
My question is, how's that compared to tabling? And if we table it, then they'll come back. If they don't, they'll have a choice to try it with the city council or come back, right?
Frankly, they would probably, well, I won't speak for them.
No, I mean.
It's a little stiffer to, depending on their timeframe. Yes, if you table it, they have to come back to you before it can go on.
Yeah.
You need a recommendation from the.
Did you say you not table it?
I prefer not to.
Yeah, I agree. I agree. Let's just recommend something and, and the city council can do what they're gonna do.
All right, well, with that said, then, can we get a, let's get a motion, then.
With regards to the access road, the name you say was unable to do, even a temporary road? I don't understand that if they're selling the whole property, I understand that they're selling it.
They're selling the property in phases.
But there's still ways to drive in and not disturb everything, more than the width of a road to take it in there. So if, is there anything we can do with the property owners?
Mr. Wilson can address that.
Talk to them, I mean, I understand where they're, on irrigation stuff. But I've looked at that and there's a lot of stuff, and you don't have to take out the farm to give them a road.
I would suggest, um, we have not been presented with a phasing map. It's not required for preliminary plat approval. I think this is a valid issue that should be considered and discussed. I think it's very appropriate to discuss that when the first final plat comes in and we can look at the phasing and say this plat stands by itself or this has too much impact based on that.
All right.
I do like the overall project.
Yeah.
Okay, yeah.
And I think it's good that that subject's been brought up and the developers are aware, so they can address it the best way. But I don't know that this is the correct time to vet that completely out.
So.
Looks like there's one gentleman.
Yes.
One more question, Brad Magnus is my name. Uh, one, one comment that he made about joining the cul-de-sacs was, um, people like their privacy, less traffic. That completely contradicts, you know, what we're trying to do with the adding this other access road off of, off of Angel. So if you could take that type of rationale and apply it to the access road, then, you know, we seem to be, we seem to be agreeing with each other. So, I was just wondering, I, I noticed he said that and I'm like, well, why don't you apply that to the access road?
Right.
I think there was one.
Thank you. Okay. Motion.
So, uh, I guess we, okay. I'm just trying to, I have never done a negative motion before. So I, I don't mind. I, um, move that we, where's my correct paper? That we deny.
Recommend.
Recommend, yeah, I move that we recommend, um, denial of the preserved subdivision preliminary plat approval for Symphony Homes at approximately 150 South Angel Street. For the reason that we are concerned, um, as a planning commission, about the dispersment of traffic long-term in the city of Kaysville and the connectivity of this new development.
I'll second that if we, if we can say because of cul-de-sacs.
Oh, yeah, because of three very long cul-de-sacs that, that max what is allowed in by city code.
Second that.
Aye.
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 Nay.
Aye.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Uh, on to number six, final plat approval for Hill Farms subdivision, Phase Six at 200 North and Angel Street from Destination Homes.
He's not quite asleep yet, so I suggest we maybe take on other business.
What's that? Oh, yeah, right, yeah.
I'm pretty familiar with Hill Farms' development, down on the corner of 200 North and Angel Street. This is the last phase of this development, Phase Five, which is just to the north of it, is currently under construction. They'd like, just as they finish that construction, to move on and, and complete Phase Six. Again, this is the last phase, it's completely in compliance with the preliminary plat. Been expecting to see, engineering's in good order and we're ready to recommend final plat approval for this phase of this development.
All right, thanks, Andy. Uh, anybody, there's no public hearing attached to this, right, then? This looks very straightforward, obviously. I mean, it's been in construction now for a number of years out there, so, uh, anybody, questions, concerns, nothing?
It looked good to me.
Nothing, you're good.
Looked like, plenty of connectivity, we like that.
Yeah, all right, good. All right, very good, then. Uh, can we get a, a, um, a, a motion then, please, on this one?
I'll make a motion. I'll make a motion that we approve final plat approval for Hill Farms subdivision phase six for Destination Homes at two hundred north and Angel Street in an R one twenty and R one fourteen zone.
Aye.
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 Awesome. And moving on, agenda number seven, public hearing and amendment of section seventeen twenty-four-three yard and structure regulations, seventeen twelve, R one, single-family residential district, and chapter seventeen thirteen, RD diverse residential district of revised ordinances of Kaysville City. Uh, if you'll remember, we've talked about this on a couple of occasions a while ago, and it's before us this evening, so.
Yeah, just as a refresher on this, and there's a lot of sections that do essentially the same thing, so hopefully we can summarize it. Um, it's been a couple of months, but we talked about several different ordinance changes and items, and it was determined that we'd break that up and kind of take them on one piece at a time.
Yeah.
And so this is just one of those pieces, in particular, it addresses farm animals. Um, in our discussion, hopefully I got everything correctly from minutes in video, we talked about, kind of originally, do we want to see farm animals at all anymore as a conditional use? Can we handle them as permitted uses? And the consensus was, we've probably seen enough chickens over the years, and we've been giving the same condition every time, that we'd feel comfortable if we made a requirement of that typical condition and put it into permitted use, that that could be permitted. But the bigger animals would continue to come back to the planning commission, horses, cows, things that might come up, uh, that we would see. So these several sections attempt to address that, should address it. Um, so under the first yard and structure regulations, the proposal was, again, as a requirement on everyone who decides to keep the chickens or farm animals, that they must be kept within an enclosed area or structures sufficient to contain the animals on site. So without, coming before the planning commission, to have that listed as a condition is just an automatic requirement under this proposal. And then the other sections essentially are the different zoning districts, um, where farm animals are allowed as a conditional use, taking out the fowl, rabbits, or similar animals specifically, and separating them from the larger animals, and listing that as a permitted use, subject to that require, requirement that was just stated among the others.
So essentially, what we're doing is, we're agreeing on, uh, the underlying highlighted issues in these four sections, right?
Yeah, so you'd be looking for a recommendation to pass along to the council.
Right.
And if there are questions or concerns on that, but the idea being, at least on chickens, you wouldn't be seeing them anymore as a planning commission.
I actually liked it when I went through this, it seems to make sense.
Yeah, it does. Very, very, very straightforward. Well, we have a public hearing on this, and we have one esteemed public out there, so we'll open it up, and we'll close it just as fast as we opened it, so. Uh, on that one, uh, we will open it up to us here on the commission, and, I mean, just me speaking, uh, off the cuff, I, like Commissioner Bullock had stated, I've read through all this, and I, I think that this is a really, a good thing, without much getting long on the tooth with it. I mean, it's, it's good, so, that's my take.
The only comment I had, or question I had, usually with chickens, we've had two questions or concerns. One is enclosure, something like that.
Right.
Two is roosters.
Roosters.
I didn't, is roosters in our ordinance already?
Yeah.
Correct.
So then, then I don't have a problem. I think it looks great, makes sense.
Yeah, we did that a while ago.
And similarly, our ordinance also deals with, um, loose fowl, I forget the exact language.
Pre-range?
So, I've dealt with it on, uh, if you have animals roaming around pre-range, essentially, the ordinance also deals with that, so, um, separately.
Up in Kaysville Heights?
So.
Crossing the street.
I have something that's related to this, but not exactly on this. This is part of a, a move that I think we started a while ago to, or that we suggested to, let's simplify things that we just rubber stamp, right?
Mm-hmm.
One of the other things I think we rubber stamped, or two of them that we had at the beginning of the meeting, um, I think there are potential concerns with handyman and, and, you know, small contractors, but is there some way, I guess, let me ask it the shortest way possible, is that going to be something we're looking at, too, down the road?
Um, we've discussed it a little bit as commission, I think the original comment was to keep seeing them because they can go through so quickly.
Right.
If that's a desire of the commission, certainly, that's kind of where the train of thinking is, just as you mentioned here, if it's, if it's a rubber stamp and you don't need to see it, then why see it? But I think the original thought was that there are enough nuances that show up occasionally with the home businesses that you wanted to continue seeing it.
We've talked about trailers and equipment and stuff like that.
A lot more subjective. Yeah, I guess the only footnote I would add to that, and this is the last thing I'll say, because I won't leave, um, is, I, personally, I trust the judgment of the staff for things that are going to be rubber stamped, and if there is some, which, which I believe would be the majority of them, but if there are ones that are in the gray area, or well out, well into the uncomfortable area, then the staff would, uh, bring them before us, and I, and so my suggestion would be that we write some mechanism in the code that gives them that leeway.
And my only thought about that, where I would say I disagree, is that, um, I would like for those, those business owners to know that, that this is a really important trust that we are placing in them, that they do contain and keep the rules that the staff has told them they must. It seems to me like they may take it just a little more seriously if they have to come before another body, they might remember it a little bit more than just maybe not even listening all the way when the staff tells them the rules, you know?
And I've actually, I've agreed with you on this before, Laurie, I feel that even though a lot of it is rubber stamped, I mean, a lot of it is very repetitious, Handyman Bob, and, you know, Haircutter Susie, and everybody else, and, you know, it's doing all that, um, I, I still like the idea of having him come before us as a body. It, it's, it's short, it's concise, it takes two or three minutes per, you know, and through the years, I mean, we have addressed some concerns and brought things up and discussed some things, and, not saying that city staff wouldn't do that, but, I don't know, for me personally as a commissioner, it kind of gives me a better idea and a little more of a purview of what's going on, and, you know, who's in my neighborhood, and what are they doing, and things along those lines, so.
Hopefully, it spotlights their business just a little bit.
And that, and that, too, you know, so, but, anyway, so, uh, with all that said, um, so can we get a motion? Do, you want a motion on this? Oh, we're good. For the.
Public hearing, I don't know if we.
Well, the public hearing's open and closed.
Okay, yeah, so we're ready for a motion, I think.
All right, so if we can get a motion on.
Let me just ask one other question. Is there any, uh, this is a lawyer in me, I think, is there any need to tighten up that language about fowl, rabbits, and similar animals? I mean, is that ever a question as to what's a similar animal? I know, a long time ago, we had this discussion about pygmy pigs and pygmy goats and how big.
It was domesticated versus non-domesticated, is what that came down to.
Right.
I don't, I mean, I, I don't have any, I just was curious if that's an issue, or if it's not. It's not, let's not worry about it.
I think, as you mentioned, it's, it's happened once or twice. What we've done in those occasions is bring that specific issue to the planning commission for interpretation of the ordinance.
So in effect, it would kick it out of the, it might kick it out of the conditional use, into the conditional use.
Into the conditional use, too.
No, it wouldn't be a conditional use, it would be a determination of whether that's a similar type animal.
Right.
It would be virtually impossible to list every animal that somebody might want to keep in their yard, and so if you try to do that, you're going to miss one, and then you're, so if there's a question, I think the, the pygmy goats were one, I think, um, several years ago, the, the small pot-bellied pigs were.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And so we brought them to the planning commission and had a determination made.
Oh.
Again, it's only happened a couple of times, it's.
All right.
Looks good.
Can I make a motion, Matt?
Yes. I would like to move that we forward a positive recommendation for the amendment of seventeen twenty-four-three as set forth in the staff report.
Second. I second that.
It's you.
It's you.
Aye.
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 Fabulous. Uh, done with that one? Go to our call of the public? There's no public?
Well, there is.
Well, there is, but, you know, I'm not trying to diminish, uh, yeah, sorry. Anyway, uh, so we'll close the call to the public, um, other matters that properly come before the planning commission, reports, correspondence, calendar. Lyle Gibson, what do you got for us?
Yeah, I've got a few items, so, um, you're, you're going to start seeing a lot of these ordinances come in, like I said, we've decided instead of trying to chew it all at once, break it off into sections, so, um, if you've got questions as those come through, and other ideas, as were mentioned, we don't have to stop at the ones that we're putting before you. If you, as a commission, can think of things that ought to be addressed, please let us know, and we'd be happy to do that. Um, one of the ordinance items, I don't have great detail on it tonight, but I had a request from a citizen who, um, was interested in subdividing their property. It's a very large lot, technically you can do it and meet the standard subdivision ordinance requirements. Um, however, I don't know if I maybe just ought to show an image, it's on the end of a cul-de-sac, and their existing driveway goes pretty far back in the lot, and they said, why can't we just do it as a flag lot? We get a better lot up front, kind of looks and feels the same, instead of being a little quirky and trying to meet the actual ordinance. Um, so in consideration of these ordinances that we're working on, I don't know if there's an interest or palette to even head down that road, or discussion of allowing flag lots on cul-de-sac streets, or perhaps you need more detail, and you could look at it and recommend approval or denial, once you see it in, in more clarity. I think Andy's pulling up the specific example here for us, so I'll keep chatting for a second.
This is my neighbor, right?
It would be very close, the Griffin family, if you know them.
Yeah.
So they've got a, a large, large street off of Bear Creek Circle, I think. Um, there have been other requests, people were interested in doing this, but this is the one that just seemed a little funny to force them to do the standard, and, um, I don't know how well it can, is visualized, but they could draw a property line here, and then straighten out the lot, and it just becomes essentially a very wide flag in this area. Their home is, is back in this portion of the property.
Oh, it's currently, it is currently subdivided, I mean, there are, there's two lots there?
We wouldn't call them buildable lots, they may have different parcels, tax IDs, but I think it's one.
Right.
Buildable lot, so, that's the example that came up, and, um, I told them I'd at least mentioned the planning commission before I went to work on the ordinance, I know flag lots, people have opinions fairly strongly on both sides of it.
Me personally, I'm not a huge supporter, fan of a house in the backyard of another house. Having it on the end of a cul-de-sac, that kind of adds another layer of frosting on an already, you know.
I like frosting, by the way. It makes me sound frosting in a negative light.
Yeah, sorry. Another layer of, uh, complexity to things.
Tears.
Yeah, so, yeah, that, too, all that, right? But, um, anyway.
Quickly, by way of history, um, I can't recall how long ago it was now, maybe ten years ago, um, flag lots were becoming issue, particularly on the east side of town.
Right.
It was, yeah, about ten years ago. Mayor Roundy was mayor at the time, so they formed a ad hoc committee to review infill development throughout the city and come up with recommendations for regulations regarding infill development. And that's when this ordinance was put into place. We do have flag lots on the end of cul-de-sacks from before that time.
So that was, it was, it was prohibited at that, through that process?
Through that process, flag lots on cul-de-sacks were prohibited. Um, that committee felt like that was double dipping, so to speak, taking advantage of two ordinances. Um, we do have a regulation that a cul-de-sack cannot exceed six hundred feet, so what we had, some people, actually, we have a couple of them in town, one of them's just across the, the way from here. Um, here, we got a six hundred foot cul-de-sack, and then a two hundred foot flag stem, so the, the home could sit, what's that?
Where's that?
Just across the creek, this is Burton Lane right here.
Oh, okay.
This cul-de-sack was in, I think, I'm not sure this is fully developed, but.
Oh, yeah, that's a private, that's that private road, that's that other.
No, this is a public road, the private road's up here, that is the same thing.
Is that Wilford, that one that you were, that one you're talking about?
Wilford Street?
Something like that.
Think so.
I know that area.
Yeah, I think it is.
Is this somewhere near that?
Yes, that is Wilford.
Shepherd at the bottom.
She, no, Sunset, not quite to Shepherd yet, Shepherd's down here.
Well, but, but the one we were just looking at.
The one that we're looking at.
Overlooks Shepherd, it's on top of the hill.
Yeah.
Kind of, yeah, this is the school over here.
Yeah. Is that big mansion on the corner here, that's the?
That's right, yeah, down here. So the feeling was, you've now essentially, by all practical means, extended the cul-de-sack to eight or nine hundred feet.
Right.
So I think that was the intent of that, um, so you could make an argument, okay, if, if the cul-de-sack plus the flag stem don't exceed six hundred, maybe that's okay. Is it okay if it comes off down here somewhere, or under the, off the end? So those are some of the things that have crossed our mind over the years.
So if you did, in, back on the, the Griffin one, if you did, is, is it a six hundred? Do they want, if you counted Blooming Grove and then went up to a flag lot, would that more than six hundred?
Off the top of my head, I'm not.
I don't know the dimension, the home is pretty far back there, but I'm not certain of the distance.
It appears that the Blooming Grove circle is a little bit shy of, of six hundred, just by comparison with the other one we were looking at.
Yeah, that one, it doesn't look like it's six hundred.
It might have a hundred and fifty, two hundred feet left.
So it's basically, if it's not a six, so if you did, if you, you didn't really suggest this, but you were kind of hinting at, if you add.
That's some of the thoughts we've had over the years.
One possibility is to say the cul-de-sack plus the flag lot, the flag road, can't be longer than six hundred feet.
Yeah.
And then, and then the only difference between that and a six hundred foot long cul-de-sack is that you have this shift from a public road to a.
To a driveway.
To a driveway.
I don't.
One of the other issues, as I recall, going back up to this one, when you do a flag lot on the end of a cul-de-sack, and then a standard lot, you've got driveway, 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 um, gets a little congested back there, so those are just some of the, the thoughts to consider and.
I've seen some things like that, kind of, that are.
It virtually becomes solid driveway all around the cul-de-sack.
It's kind of, it's wonky, man, I mean, right? It's not, certainly, kind of unorthodox, doing stuff like this, right? Yeah.
Well, I gather it's, it's probably complex enough that maybe we put together something formal, and then you could look at it in more detail and determine one way or the other.
You could, I almost feel like, uh, this is one of those things, we'd have to look at each one and see if it made sense or not.
That's why we're just throwing them out to you now, so you can start under it when you're laying awake at night.
Yeah.
I'm going to go home and dig right into this. Yeah.
I'm going to go take pictures of some of the wonky ones I've already seen.
Yeah, exactly.
We're having a work session right after this, bud.
No, I think we probably need to get a motion to adjourn here in a minute, until next.
Just a couple more items for you, super quick.
Oh, sorry.
No, I apologize, cutting in on you as well, so, excuse me. Um, we previously, back in October, I believe it was, distributed, uh, letters with the appeal on the Burton Lane, Jim Puffer.
Yes.
Property. And it's not a hundred percent concrete, but likely the next meeting on the twenty-fifth, um, we'll be ready to appeal that. Um, I've been in discussion with, uh, Mr. Mills, our attorney, regarding that, there are reasons where that may not need to take place at that time. Um, however, if it is, we now have representation that's here, which was previously requested by the commission, so that when we go through that unique process, we've got some guidance, so, um, I'll reach out with the correspondence and at least send digital copies of those items. If you'd like anything different, please let me know, I know there's quite a bit of paper there that was with it, and you may still have it, but.
Yeah, I have it.
And then the final is, is in tandem with that, the twenty-fifth is our next meeting, is all I've got.